And the roll call, all board members are present, and we have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Public comment announcement pursuant to board policy number two, three, five, zero. Public comment may be limited to five minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the closed session agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. Budge of allegiance, Mr. Buffalo, please lead us.
Face the flag, place your hand over your heart and again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. May I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item ten, open forum on non-agenda items, I do have one public comment card for non-agenda items. Mr. David Adams.
Better, okay. Good evening, board. Good to see you again, it's been several months, I hope everyone's doing well and having a nice summer, also good to finally actually meet Isabel in person for the first time, we've done a lot of discussions in the past and congratulations, Shawmi, on your new appointment, so it's nice to see everyone here, so I'm just here as a instructor today, not a union member, just as an instructor, just to give you guys an update of how high flex is going. For the first time in 10 years, I was either smart enough or not smart enough. Okay, can you hear me now? Better, okay, well, so what the purpose of today's, you know, coming here was to talk about high flex, and it's been an interesting experience, some good, some not so good, but you know, overall better than I expected, and so for, in case the board is not familiar, high flex is a new way of teaching in which we teach to a, right now, a limited amount of students in the classroom, up to seven students, and then the majority of the other students are taking the classroom home and they are, there's a camera in the classroom and they're taking it through, at least in my class, through Zoom. And so it's working pretty well, I will say this to, for Rick Shaw and his team over at ITS, they've done an amazing job, and I just want to let them know whenever I needed help, they've been there for me, so it's been good. Some of the good things is we're reaching out to more students who we couldn't reach out to otherwise, and we're also serving students who really need to be in the classroom in order to get the most out of the teaching, get the most out of their learning experience. However, I will say some of the downfalls, at least maybe the board should be aware of, is just because it's new technology, we're trying to iron out some, you know, some, some hitches, and some of them is there's preset camera angles and they're good and not so good, and the fact that you can only convey so much information on the screen, so for instance, like we have a big whiteboard, in the middle, we have a screen and a whiteboard on each side. And because of the way that the cameras are set up, I can only really write on one side of the whiteboard in order for my students to convey, which means I'm constantly writing stuff down, taking it off, where I'm not being able to utilize the entire class. Another thing that the board should be cognizant of is that the camera doesn't track with you, so really, you're sort of limited to one area of the classroom. And that usually is where the microphone is. We do have a microphone setup that's, that's wireless that you can set up, however, the batteries wear out quickly and we find out it doesn't really work that well, and then students can't hear you, so I've sort of confided myself to a certain area of the classroom. So it's not to say that, you know, if you don't prepare and do great lesson planning, you can't give a good teaching experience. And I really want to work, you know, with both ITS and with Isabel to, you know, maybe some sort of task force to find out what went well with high flex, what needs improvement, but overall, I'm trying to come from a position of you know, really trying to find a way to make this work. And hopefully, you know, you know, this may be a standard that we may move forward, whether in in a more, you know, limited fashion or just expanded. I will say this, why, my, my biggest pitfall is that in one of my classes, I only have one student in my class. And it's really tough as an educator, I'll tell you, to get riled up to teach when you're looking around the whole room and there's one person there. And I understand right now, because of the pandemic, we're doing it limited, and in the fall, there will be more people, but it's something that you should be cognizant of, and I would invite the president and any member of the board to come to any of my eight AM classes. If you want to get up that early, I'm bright and early, and I did, a lot of you guys know I tend to scream a lot in class, so if you, you know, come on in, you're more than welcome, and I'd like to then I can give you an example of what's working well, maybe we can work on in the future, so just an update, and I hope you guys are having a good summer, and I look forward to seeing everyone back in the fall, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item eleven point one, presentation of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two general obligation refunding bonds.
Good evening. Frank will be presenting the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two general obligation refunding bonds. Frank Vega is a managing director at RBC Capital Markets and has been the lead bond finance banker to Antelope Valley College since two thousand eight. And this time Frank has worked on every bond financing for ABC, including all of the colleges' general obligation bonds and tax and, and tax and revenue anticipation notes. Frank is headquartered in downtown Los Angeles and has rigorously provided updates and presentations to the board governing board. Frank is a California Community College alum, having attended Glendale CCD in the early nineteen nineties.
Just means a hold. Well, good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Knudsen, senior administration and members of the community. I am sorry that I can't be there in person, this is the time I presented to you and not had the privilege of, of being in, in the room with you, so I do apologize, but do, I do thank you for the opportunity again to share with you the updates and, and the plan that we'd like to present later this evening. For the new members, I will go through sort of the, as, as detailed as I can some of the, the specifics of what this plan entails, but for the members that have heard this presentation before, this is yet another opportunity to lower property taxes, to save local taxpayer money. The, what's unique about this particular item is in the past, we've refinanced, refunded bonds under the original two thousand two bond measure, the original bond measure for the college. This will be the first time that we're able to refinance and refund bonds specific to measure AV. And that will have two benefits for the community, number one, it'll be lower taxes, and you'll see in a moment a significant amount, a significant amount of taxpayer reduction will be achieved this summer when we are able to finalize this, this process. But that also has a direct benefit to the college, because while lowering those taxes provides a relief to the taxpayer, it also creates flexibility for the balance of measure AV. So when and if the college is ready for that last piece, there's about a hundred and five million dollars remaining of authorized but unsold bonds. This bond refinancing is going to give you the opportunity to, to set up those bonds in the most cost-effective way to the taxpayer, so it's flexibility and doing it in a way that lowers taxes. You know, I apologize, I don't know who can control the presentation, I obviously am not a host, so I can't turn the page. But if someone could take us to page two. I just want to give a very, very quick and brief, just sort of update on where things stand. So again, everything is based off community values, the term that you'll often hear is assessed value. For the year that just ended two weeks ago, the value for Antelope Valley College is thirty nine billion, four hundred fifty million, that's the top line. That represented about a five point eight percent increase from the prior year. What makes this unique is again, this is right in the throes of COVID and, and the economic shutdown that we all experienced last summer or last year, excuse me, not just the summertime. So despite the fact that there was a large economic shutdown, despite the fact that there were ser- serious challenges to the local economy, the tax base for Antelope Valley College again showed how resilient it is and, and just how established it is to experience five point eight percent growth last year is very, very significant, so that's, that's, that's positive. Just for background, that number is important as well, because there's state debt limits. Not quite like the GAN limit, but think of it as an overall debt limit that's in the constitution. Based off of that total value, and there's a formula in state law, your bonding capacity is about six hundred seven million. And you'll see in a moment, you're nowhere close to that, so the way we like to think of it is from a legal standpoint, you know, the credit card says you can borrow up to six hundred seven million, but in reality, you've only have bonds outstanding about three hundred and seventy eight million, so well, well below. It's another way of saying you've managed your debt very well, you've not pushed the debt to the limit, and you'll see in a moment on the next page what that means to the taxpayer. So if we could turn to the next page. This is the summary of all the bonds that, that have been issued, and I won't go by my line. But essentially, what we're saying here is of every bond that's ever been sold by Antelope Valley College, we've identified this first series, the original bond sale from two thousand seventeen under measure AV. That's what we're looking to refinance. So as a quick reminder, measure R has been fully exhausted, there's no more bonds outstanding, the only, for projects, I apologize, new bonds for projects. All the bonds that are left are just all refinancing bonds, refunding bonds that we've done in the last five to six, seven years. Measure AV, as I mentioned earlier, there's a hundred and five million left of bonds to sell for new projects. We sold the first series of bonds in two thousand seventeen for a hundred and fifty million. Last spring, we sold ninety five million, so you should be in the midst of a major, you know, capital program and those dollars being put to work. But what we do is we look at everything, we don't just focus on one particular bond. We've highlighted here in light blue the bonds that, under current market conditions, provide the minimum savings requirements that you'd find in the, what we say, the GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association guideline or manual. So these are the bonds that we've targeted, they provide immediate savings and meaningful savings, as you'll see in a moment. If we could turn the page, please. So this is, under current conditions, what we've identified is approximately eighty two million of bonds to be refunded. And under current conditions, that's going to save taxpayers conservatively, we've estimated ten point seven million. Now, there's always a way to, to judge, you know, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar tomorrow, so we always talk about present value, you know, what's the value of that dollar over time? So ten point seven million translates to seven point eight million on a present value basis. And that's about eleven point eight percent net of all costs, so this is not the gross savings, this is after every transaction cost, the rating fees, the legal fees, things like that. We highlight that number because again, going back to the GFOA guidelines and, and minimum standards, three percent is considered the benchmark for, for a bond refunding or refinancing. So in other words, the GFOA would say you wouldn't participate and, and age or, or consider this type of item unless you had at least three percent savings. You know, conservatively, under today's rates, you're saving almost twelve percent. So it, it's meaningful, and, and not only is it meaningful, as we mentioned, it's going to provide relief and some flexibility on measure AV moving forward. We can do questions at the end, I just want to kind of get through this quickly, because I know there probably are a few questions. If you go to the next page and the final page, this is for, you know, for the new members, there's a schedule that, that generally follows this, this sort of framework, and for the, the existing board members, you've, this may look familiar to you. Should you approve this tonight, the next steps is there's a credit rating process. Now, the rating agencies just rated the college last spring, that was the transaction we did. So the update will be pretty simple, then, as you all are aware, the state economic condition and the funding for public education and community colleges has, has significantly improved from where we were just twelve months ago. So we expect a very positive outcome and just be more updates related to the state budget and, and things of that nature. Then what we do is we get that rating and we begin marketing the bonds to investors, we send out a prospectus or what we call a preliminary official statement. At that point, we will coordinate calls with the senior administration and, and go through the bond sale process. That date is currently targeted for August the fifth. If things go well and we can achieve the minimum savings, I just highlighted, we'd lock in the rates, everything is done, there's no risk to the college. And as a reminder, there's not one penny of cost to the college, this is all done, only if the rates achieve the minimum savings we're looking for. Everything would be completed by late, before Labor Day, August twenty fifth. There's some paperwork and a lot of documents that, that need to be signed by the college, and that's after August fifth, concluding on August twenty fifth. So pretty straightforward as far as a, a traditional bond refunding, refinancing. But I know there are some new members and, and people, and they may have questions, so I'll stop there and, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah.
Your mic, please.
Good evening. I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Of course.
What are the denominations of the bonds? How much do they sell them for?
Tremendous question, the minimum is five thousand dollars, and we've done this in the past, in fact, for the first measure AB sale, we took out a very low, we, we, the financing team, you know, paid for a, a nice ad in the AV press. We had an offering for local investors, so any investor in the community for as little as five thousand dollars can buy Antelope Valley College bonds, and we can make that available again, five thousand.
Okay. Who, who's mainly buying the bonds, investment firms, banks?
Another great question, so the upside to rates being this low is that you get to lower taxpayer savings and your cost of funds are efficient and, and all the things you'd want as far as a public program, that's the good news. The bad news is to the individual investor, someone who's saving for retirement or, or a college fund, if you go back, you don't have to pull up the presentation, but the current estimated interest rate for these bonds over a twenty year period is a two point four eight percent. So that's the downside, you were asking individuals, people saving for their retirement for the future to receive a two point four eight rate of return for twenty years. It's really hard to get individuals to, to, to wait that long for such a low rate when equities and stock and things like that are doing so well. So the long answer is what I just gave you, the short answer is it's insurance companies, it's bond funds. It is what we call private or high-end retail, because these bonds have a tax benefit. In high-tax states like California, these bonds do provide tax relief or they do shield some income from, from your personal income taxes. So we do try and refine that with individuals, but primarily, it's going to be insurance companies, bond funds like Franklin, Vanguard, you know, Nuvine, folks of that nature. And then we do try and drill down to individuals, but it tends to be people that have high tax liabilities. Those are the individuals that generally look at these type of bonds.
So the two point four eight is tax-free interest income, is that correct?
It'll be tax-free in California, it will be taxed by the IRS.
Okay. Now, this refunding extends the life of the bond, is that correct?
No, and then that's a very, another great question and a key point to emphasize. Unlike a home loan, the, the, the dynamic here is state law prohibits on a general obligation bond extending the term. So by one day, we cannot change the term, nor would we. So all you're simply doing is take the existing rate, again, I don't know if you, if you have the screen or the presentation in front of you, the current rate that the community's paying is approximately five percent. While we're simply doing is taking the exact same payment term and lowering that rate down to currently a two point four eight. So there is no extension of term in any way, shape or form.
Okay, do, do we have to pay a balloon payment before we have to pay the entire principal back?
No, not at all, you know, again, this is where some of the work that I had done with, you know, Ms. Kealan and of course, Mr. Knudsen, ensuring that the, that the pro forma debt payments don't result in a spike to the community. So we amortize, we make sure that these bonds are paid off in a way so that the community sees a very consistent level tax rate. So the, the individual homeowner is not going to see some huge spike, nor are they going to be obligated to make some large balloon payment. We pay off these bonds in a, in a sort of a step-down mechanism so that there is a consistent, uniform tax to the community. And in this instance, we would be lowering said taxes again, and a, we would say a proportional or a, a nice level amount. So there will be no balloon upfront, no, no shock to the system. These are straightforward, uniform payments that, that are, that are structured, that are pieced together in a way where the taxes of the community do not change. They don't change up, they're going to change down, but in a level way.
Okay, one last question.
Of course.
Do you notify the county assessor of the change in the, the bond? Five percent to two point four eight, you, you notify them or do we notify them?
It, it's so, again, tremendous questions, and, and, and I don't mean, I don't say that lightly, these are very, very important for everyone to hear and to, to dialogue. The process that we will engage in, when I mentioned earlier, we'll set up calls and lock in the rates with the senior administration. One of the participants on that call is Los Angeles County Treasurer Tax Collector's Office. And so they weigh in and lend their expertise to the college to ensure that the rates that we secure, to make sure that the debt structure, to make sure all the things you just asked are consistent with county, you know, guidelines or principles. So once we lock in the rates, the college doesn't have to do anything, there's some documents that, that the board president will have to sign, Mr. Knudsen will have to sign. But generally, we handle all of that. The assessor doesn't have to get involved, it's primarily the treasurer, tax collector and the auditor controller, and, and I know that's semantics, but, but we do notify all the relevant governmental agencies so that they are aware, they immediately implement the tax reduction, and so your, your homeowners would see it as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, I have, I have one question, possibly two. Can you give us, and I, I've kind of looked for it through here, what is the current credit rating of Antelope Valley College?
Absolutely. I will be specific, because there are these designations, not just the letters. So, and, and right around the time we, we, measure AV was approved, when we did the most recent credit rating process, the college received an upgrade, and that upgrade took you to what we call the double A level. So I'm pulling this up on my screen right now, if you'll just give me another twenty seconds here. Here we go. So as we sit here this evening, the current ratings for the college by the two raider made, rating agencies, Moody's Investor Service and Standard and Poor's. And of course, my screen froze, I do apologize, here it comes. You are currently rated double A two by Moody's and double A, what we say, flat by S and P. And about ten years ago, the college's rating was double A three and double A minus. So even though you've been in the double A category, which is in the upper eightieth percentile for all community colleges in the state of California, the designation of the number two by Moody's is better than three, so it kind of goes the opposite, two in this case, than three. That was an upgrade that you achieved a few years ago. And then Standard and Poor's had you at double A minus. We removed the, the college, I didn't do much, I just made, helped you make the presentation, the college's minus was reviewed, so now you're double A flat. That is very, very consistent with high, you know, high-performing institutions like College of the, well, Santa Clarita CCD, College of the, College of the Canyons. You know, Glendale College, Pasadena College, primarily in Los Angeles County, most community college districts are rated double A two, a couple double A ones in the coast, like Santa Monica Community College, Long Beach College. So you are very, you're in rarified air, you have very, very high credit ratings, that's what allows us to lock in these rates that are so low, you have such a high credit quality. That's a big, big piece of, of why this transaction produces the savings that we think it's going to.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Hey, moving on, item twelve, twelve point one, report of closed session action. There was no reportable closed session actions taken. Item thirteen, approval of the consent agenda. We are amending item thirteen point three, page eleven point five, and removing the name of Janet Bode from the classified new hires page. Other than that, the personnel schedule is as written. And so I will hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items by unanimous consent with that one change.
So move.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Moving on to action items. Item fourteen point one, approval of superintendent's organizational report revised, may I hear a motion? Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point two, approval of the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three academic calendar, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point three, approval of revised resolution to lay off number twenty dash twenty one slash ten due to bookstore contract going to Barnes and Noble, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I wanted the public to know that we're going through these items rather quickly. And I want the public to know that I've spent several hours reviewing every one of these items. So even though we're going through this quickly, these items have been examined and questions have been asked, thank you.
Thank you. Advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point four, approval of resolution number twenty twenty one. Number twenty one dash twenty two slash one, authorizing the issuance of the Antelope Valley Community College District, Los Angeles and Kern Counties, California, twenty twenty one general obligation refunding bonds, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point five, approval of resolution number twenty one dash twenty two slash two, authorizing an increase to the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two GAN limit, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point six, approval of foster and kinship education budget allocation for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, may I hear a motion? Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point seven, approval of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two memorandum of understanding between Palmdale School District Early Childhood Education Programs, developing a partnership, DAP, and Antelope Valley Community College, may I hear a motion? Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point eight, approval of year two of the agreement with Simplicity Corporation, which provides case management software and shared database for human resources and general counsel, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes, item fourteen point nine, approval of a five-year agreement between Success Incorporated and Antelope Valley Community College District for substance abuse service from July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, may I hear a motion? Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point ten, approval of a five-year agreement between HWW Incorporated, PBA, Ad Club Advertising Services and the Antelope Valley Community College District from July first, twenty twenty one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, may I hear a motion? Thank you, discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point eleven, approval of amendment number one to consultant service agreement between Robert A. Paris, a professional corporation, and the Antelope Valley Community College for Mediation Services, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twelve, approval of amendment number three to the professional services agreement between Walter Johnson and Associates Incorporated to provide investigation services for the district, may I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion, advice.
I approve.
All those in favor, please. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirteen, approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two member contribution for statewide association of community colleges, S W A C C, for property and liability coverage for the district. May hear a motion.
So move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point fourteen. Approval of protected insurance program for schools, PIPs, and community colleges' joint powers authority renewal for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two for workers' compensation coverage for the district, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point fifteen. Approval of property and casualty claims administration services agreement with Keenan and Associates, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point sixteen. Approval of memorandum of understanding between J V S, SoCal, and Antelope Valley College regarding implement implementing a pilot veteran services initiative, may hear a motion.
So move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point seventeen. Approval of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two athletic ball sports schedules for men's and women's sports, may hear a motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point eighteen, approval to replace copiers using Canon USA Incorporated Cooperative Agreement. May hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point nineteen, approval to utilize B and H Photo Electronics Corporation Piggyback Agreement through Foundation for California Community Colleges, F C C C, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty. Approval to utilize C D W Government LLC Piggyback Agreement through Foundation for California Community Colleges, F C C C, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-one. Approval to utilize Office Depot LLC Piggyback Agreement through Foundation for California Community Colleges, F C C C, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-two, approval to utilize Sean Khan Consulting Company Incorporated, D B A, S K C Company Piggyback Agreement through Foundation for California Community Colleges, F C C C, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-three, approval to use Cranium Cafe LLC, D B A, Conex Ed Master Agreement through the Foundation for California Community Colleges, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-four. Approval to utilize Mohawk Commercial Incorporated Piggyback Agreement through California Multiple Award Schedule, C M A S. May hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point twenty-five. Approval to utilize Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Inbook Learning, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-six. Approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Neo Gov, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-seven. Approval to extend use of the Foundation for California Community Colleges Cooperative Agreement with Planet Bids Incorporated for the purchase of e-procurement solution software through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-eight, approval of extension of contract with smarter thinking for online tutoring services, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-nine. Approval to purchase network equipment from N E Systems Incorporated through the use of the C M A S three dash eighteen dash seventy dash twenty forty-five Z Piggyback Agreement for Sage Hall with Measure A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty. Approval to purchase A V equipment from Golden Star Technology Incorporated Piggyback Agreement through the Los Angeles Community College District for Sage Hall with Measure A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-one. Approval to purchase A V equipment and labor installation from Golden Star Technology Incorporated for the Phase Two Sealing Microphone Project, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-two. Approval to award contracted P F D management for providing food service operations to the Antelope Valley College District, R F P, A B C twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one dash seven. May hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-three. Approval of district's five-year construction plan, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-four. Approval to award contracted Barnes and Noble College for providing bookstore operations to the Antelope Valley College District, R F P, A B C twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one dash five, may hear a motion. Discussion?
Mister President?
Yes.
At the last meeting, uh, we voted to lay off the employees of the bookstore because Barnes and Noble, uh, was going to take over the bookstore. I'm pleased to learn tonight that those employees of the college that work for the bookstore have been found other positions on the campus. So no one lost their jobs, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Advice? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-five, approval to award bid A B C twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one dash ten swing space Phase Two project with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? I do have a public comment card on this item, Don McIntosh.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to private, provide a little bit of clarification on this. And we had three bid packages that went out. Uh, two of them bid package four and bid package nineteen, we had multiple bids and we were able to confirm the lowest bidder. Um, for bid package twenty-two, we had indicated that we postpone that because we only had one bidder. That bid came in at almost double what our projected cost was. So we wanted to reevaluate what our costs were and ensure they were in line. So we would, um, we were asking permission to, while we had put on here that we will rebid because we need to reject that bid package, just the the number twenty-two. So I just wanted to provide clarification for that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-six. Approval for the division of state architect fees, Foxfield Project with Strong Workforce Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-seven. Approval of change orders for campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-eight. Approval of change orders for Sage Hall seventeen dash zero three one with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-nine. Approval of change orders for infrastructure seventeen dash zero two nine with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point forty. Approval of project assignment amendment to Nolan Construction Services for Project Inspector of Record Services, Marauder Complex Project seventeen dash zero four one with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point forty-one, approval of contract with Kruger Benson Zeimer Architects Incorporated for architectural and engineering services. Palmdale Center Computer Labs twenty-one dash zero one four, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point forty-two, approval of furniture purchase, Sierra School Equipment Sage Hall Project seventeen dash zero three one with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point forty-three, approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero, Rutherford Company Incorporated, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point forty-four. Correction to June twenty-first, June twenty twenty-one, board item fourteen point two nine. Approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on signage and wayfinding seventeen dash zero three eight. Frank and Sons, D B A, Express Sign and Neon with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point forty-five. Correction to June twenty twenty-one, board item fourteen point thirty-eight. Approval to file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero. Michael Florin Incorporated for ceramic tile with Major A V Funds, may hear a motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Well, that was fun. Fifteen information items, you all have in your packets. Fifteen point one, self-evaluation of the early childhood education program for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Fifteen point two, progress report on correction action plan to address the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit findings. And fifteen point three, Antelope Valley Community College District Facilities Services monthly report. Moving on to item sixteen, reports and announcements, academic senate is absent tonight. And item two, Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Kathy Osborne.
Good thing I don't teach, you know, like computer apps or anything. On March first, twenty twenty-one, we filed a grievance on behalf of one of our members. The grievance was filed with the appropriate vice president, that time Jennifer Burchett. On or around March second, Jen Burchett, the VP of H R escalated the grievance to the president and he denied the grievance. My understanding was that the VP of H R denied the grievance and then forwarded it to the the next level, the president. Due to the confusion of the president, once again, holding two positions within the administration, I went ahead and escalated the board, to the board, the grievance, the board of trustees. That was just a misunderstanding between us. I trust you all received it and that you read it. The president then spoke to me and explained to me that should not have gone to the board trustees. The federation agreed to move to mediation. We have been waiting for mediation to be scheduled since April of twenty twenty-one. We have all the emails and documentation that will show this. What is ensued is unacceptable and violates the timelines required by the C B A. The president clearly and specifically directed the interim general counsel to schedule mediation. It does not take months to make a phone call to schedule mediation. My question to you, esteemed members of the board, is why is this acceptable? Where is the accountability? If the federation failed to respond to a grievance for months, we would be told that we violated the required timelines and that the grievance was invalid. Why isn't the interim general counsel held to the same standard as the federation? Since administration has failed to meet the requirements that govern the grievance, should the grievance be automatically approved and granted to the grievance? Is, do we have a double standard? Know this, the federation goes out of their way to try and resolve grievances in a timely and amicable manner. But we cannot do that when we are faced with administrators who obviously do not have the desire to resolve the issue. I firmly believe that our new V P A A Isabel Saber would have brought this grievance to closure within the required timelines. She has proven to be an ally to all A B C employees, not just administration, not just faculty, not just classified employees. Don't under, misunderstand me. We don't always agree on everything. But that's okay, because she's fair and responds in a timely manner and she believes in accountability. Those traits are sorely lacking in the administrator responsible for this situation who has, in my presence, referred to the faculty as quote, "one of you" in a meeting. This us against them culture is driven by administration on this campus and it needs to be healed. The federation has every right to escalate this grievance and a good case to file a complaint with P R. I'm asking the board of trustees to hold administration accountable, demand that they meet the same requirements that the federation is required to meet. I challenge you to research and follow up on this grievance rather than just taking the path of least resistance and telling the president to handle it because it has not been handled. Next, the federation respectfully requests that we immediately begin the search for the new vice president of human resources. While the current acting VP is both competent and personable, we need to hire a permanent employee as soon as possible. It's been a very tumultuous in the past few years where at one point, Ed Knudsen was the president, acting V P of H R and the acting V P A A. This is not a good situation either for Mr. Knudsen's health nor the overall health of A V C. Hiring a permanent V P of H R as soon as possible is paramount for all of A V C. And finally, it is currently week nine of our twelve-week semester. We do not have a summer M O U. I ask you once again, members of the board, where is the accountability? The federation's negotiations team has earnestly tried to work with administration to complete the summer M O U. On June eighth, we received an email from the interim general counsel accusing our negotiations team of bad faith, bad faith bargaining and unethical behavior. Therefore, they stated the administration was not inclined to schedule a time to negotiate. I implore you once again to research the situation for yourselves. Do not rely on a single source of information. Do not take the easy way out and tell the president himself to address it. But I urge each of you to find out for yourself what is going on at A V C. Thank you.
Antelope Valley College Federation Class nine employees, Susan Olson. Thank you. Sixteen point four, confidential management supervisor administrator employees, Mike Fikino.
I'll report.
Thank you. Sixteen point five, associate student organization, I believe, Rosio, you'll be making that report?
Yes, I will.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So currently in A S O, we're going to be getting ready for the fall semester and we're excited to be transitioning hopefully more in person. We're also looking for more students to join A S O. For all students, it's a great opportunity to connect with others and contribute to A V C. You get to plan events and be part of the discussions that are happening on campus. There are approximately seven positions available and if you're interested, you can contact Dr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Antelope Valley College Foundation is absent and Office of Superintendent President, Mr. Knudsen.
Just a couple of things that go over quickly. Uh, we are organizing a, uh, report to the community. In the past, I have given updates to the city councils on their agendas. Usually I end up getting about five minutes halfway through an agenda to update the individual city councils. We're going to be hosting a, uh, state of the college event for community leaders and, um, board members, uh, city councils and elected officials, um, on, on August fifth. And, uh, we'll be making that presentation. It's an invitation, uh, event uh, so that we can get those, those community leaders here and give them a full report on the state of the college and answer their questions. Opening day is going to be, we're going to do it a little bit differently in the morning. The afternoon, we'll still have the presentations, uh, the professional development presentations for faculty. But in the morning, we're going to do it a little bit differently and have a little bit of fun. It is Hawaiian shirt day. We're going to start off with some activities that we, we hope will be a little bit uplifting and we're going to celebrate being back on campus. And, uh, because of space issues and things where, well, we will be in the theater and we're all okay with that. But at, instead of the barbecue where people are jammed up in lines, we're going to uh, have box lunches and they'll be available in their upper end box lunches. It's not like you used to take in third grade. These are upper end box lunches for everybody, uh, in the fine arts quad and tables around campus. People can spread out and if you want to go, you know, I can, if you want to go watch some construction activity, you can do that and those kinds of things. So we're doing that. And then the normal business that we usually take care of on opening day, we will have a town hall um, September eighth from twelve thirty to one thirty. This is one of the quietest times on campus in the course, in the class scheduling. Now we'll allow most faculty to be able to attend that town hall. Uh, we have, for, not all classes, but most classes are quiet between twelve twenty-five and one. So this will allow, uh, faculty to actively participate in the town hall and that will be an update on the business of the, of the college. Now, part of our D E I, uh, movement and doing those kinds of things on campus, I was doing a little research and I asked human resources to, uh, give me a report for all hires since January first of twenty twenty. So for the last eighteen months, ninety-nine people have been hired. That includes all classes to include part-time faculty. Ninety-nine people have been hired since January first of twenty twenty and forty-five of those are non-white. And that's it.
Thank you. Board member comments, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. I hope everyone is feeling optimistic and healthy despite the heat today. And I hope students are enjoying their summer classes so far. I want to wish all students good luck as midterms approach. So good luck with your assignments and your exams. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harvey.
Yes, I would like to offer the students a very good luck with their midterms. I hope that you all do well on your exams, also with the heat. Um, one thing that I learned this week that I was not aware of is that we are dealing with warmer temperatures in the evenings. Um, and that is a change for our area and actually, you know, it is, um, a difference with climate here in, in the A V, um, which also affects your sleeping habits, uh, the regulation of your body temperature. So once I figured that out and I realized I wasn't sleeping well because it's hotter than usual, I, I figured I would share that with you. Uh, what doctors are asking is for the public to be aware of heat symptoms in the evenings and at night as well as in the day. So I just wanted to share that with the public.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Um, I just want to, uh, I had the pleasure of attending the Antelope Valley College Golf Tournament on June eighteenth. Um, I got to caddy for my grandson, even though I rode in a cart. It was pretty painless, but it was hot. Um, and I just want to say to the athletic department, um, Thomas, um, that it was a very well organized event where a lot of golfers out there. Um, and I think everyone really had an enjoyable time. I, I had a, I had a really good time because a couple of years ago, my grandson played and I, and we could see the improvement from a thirteen-year-old to a fifteen-year-old. So it was, it was quite exciting. And also, um, today we went to the vocational nursing, nurses pinning. And, uh, I believe there were twenty-three of them who finished today and, uh, I heard from a couple of people, this is one of the largest classes we've had in a long time for the vocational nurses, um, to completion. And I just wanted to say, uh, congratulations to all of them. Um, that speaks volumes about the amazing program, nurses program that we have here at Antelope Valley Community College and, uh, just, uh, let's continue doing all those wonderful things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffalo.
Okay, I was at Dodger Stadium yesterday and I just melted. So, but I'm good. So, um, I happened to, um, talk to one of our students today over at Vons and former students, what I should say. And when the shutdown occurred and we went online, she dropped out because it just wasn't working for her and she was a very good student. Well, she's coming back this fall. She's really excited. And the in-person works. And if we're not in person, we lose a lot of students like that. So that's really important. As far as all the heat, guys, just consider it, this is like a cool day in Phoenix, trust me.
Thank you. Uh, there is no reason to go back into closed session. So, uh, date of next meeting is August ninth, twenty twenty one, and we are adjourned.
And it's a whole lot cooler than our troops in the Mideast.